Andy, every four years voters go to the polls.
Judy, would you please move it out? They can't hear.
Every four years voters go to the polls to elect someone to do the job of running the Owl County. If elected four years from now, what improvements will have been accomplished?
Hopefully, we would have even better safety in our community. A plan to be reelected. We have a chair's place, we have two candidates for the chair. Whoever, whomever is elected, I intend immediately to get with them, try to put a game plan together. We have no community that I know of that is free of drugs or crime. It's in every community, but I plan to work with whomever is our next chair to see what we can do to try to reduce that rate in both areas for the benefit of our community. And we have our EMS service, I'm very proud of, made vast improvements in that for our community. There's always room for improvement, but we now have ambulances that will make an adjustment without breaking down. If I'm having a heart attack, I don't want that to happen to me or my family. We have several, several safety issues that need to be addressed over a period of time. You can't do it all overnight. Other things for our community as far as recreation, we can make some changes there. We have other personnel staff. We've seen much more this year already, much more restations and programs out there. We now have a director for our development authority. My main concern for the community was the enhancement of the procurement of jobs. We got only two people on the development authority. I took office four years ago. We have pulled aboard now and now we have a director. I look forward to doing things.
Janelle?
Would you like to repeat?
Every four years voters go to the polls to elect someone to do the job of running Owl County. If elected four years from now, what improvements will you have accomplished?
Okay, with my next four-year as chairman, I will accomplish the making sure the road system and the road department has supervision to improve our roads and provide safety for our school buses and our children and with the EMS and our police force for our children. And also, Bacon County will comply with the local, state, and federal guidelines and will stop wasteful spending and will be accountable for all the dollars spent in Bacon County.
Thank you.
Andy, do I need to repeat?
If elected four years from now, what improvements will have been accomplished?
My main objective would be to lead as the government leaders do, and we do, most of the decisions city government, and we are accountable for all taxpayer problems. I don't need to repeat anything. There's nothing wrong here, just I think that's more commissioners are elected to set policy, chairmen elected to implement the policy. But my goal within all of that would be to improve quality for our kids, recreation, visitation, our middle-aged people to have something to do, our adults to have something to do, and our senior adults to be taking care of the highest possible quality of life they can have. That means, as you see, we must continue to put Bacon County on the map by promoting our blueberry industry that we have and hopefully as the years go along and not many people love, I'm glad the industry is on, taking a baby step right now in this area. I'd love to see that developed as well as other emerging crops, take care of our farmers. And we still have to work on reducing that tax burden for our local property taxes. And how do we do that? I'm not exactly sure. I'm sure we'll work with that and make some conversations to reduce the cost.
Juan?
Our next round of questions is by Juan McDaniel, and this question, the first question goes to...
Janelle.
Janelle.
How will you work for better control and proper use of splotched dollars?
Excuse me just a minute. I know you asked me to pass, I asked you to repeat it so the audience, it's hard, it's pretty hard to hear it all.
How will you work for better control and proper use of splotched dollars?
The taxpayers actually go on a resolution exhibit for the projects that are being pleaded with these lost dollars as they come in. And as, as the county receives lost dollars, they should be divided into their proportion. They should receive their portion, the county should receive theirs. And there are projects that the county and city do together. So therefore, and there needs to be an accountability of the lost dollars being received. And I'm not sure if that's being done right now because we're actually spending and making payments on leasing motor rates, you know, for the road department. So with the back end of the month, the local state rules regulations on that. But that will be done in January.
Thank you. Eugene?
Do you want to repeat your questions, please?
How will you work for better control and proper use of splotched dollars?
Splotting is absolute in the referendum passed by the local taxpayer. The state law tells you properly to spend and disperse. And I can assure you that times I was here, years passed, we did that before the state law. If there was ever any question about even a joint project that we were looking to possibly try and do, we were back to representing, back to the attorney that represented the splotch language. A young man named Phil, he was a member. Personally, he was able to come to help through the resolution. You have to abide by the state law. It's not an option. It's just something that shouldn't be a problem for anyone that's governing the county. The state can abide by that state law decision, but it's not an issue. The county said you can't, no. Just for a second. Move on.
Mr. Hatta?
I'll repeat the question, please.
How will you work for better control and proper use of splotched dollars?
If we elected, our, the upcoming splotch will be in the year 2018. It would be discussed and worked out with the city council in the year 2017. There would be a lot of changes in the way this splotch is written. I don't know what was the splotch referendum that was in place when I was elected. In my opinion, poorly written. I can't even get to your address to actually prove it. There are, there are a lot of gray areas needed that I, in my opinion, should be there. We're trying to operate under what we inherited, but I can assure you if I could be involved in the right next one, it will be more particular and more to the point and more defined. Now, dependent changes from term to term on splotch as to what is needed in the community, what the two governing bodies, fortunately, we only have one municipality in Bacon County, so that makes it a lot easier. Some counties have four or five cities within their county. If there is not, if we don't have any tier-one projects to begin with, then we can look at joint projects. We may also, it depends on the nature of the community at the time, when it's written, but there's different ways it can be written to where it's, even with, you could take some of the issues that, that always seem to come up, joint projects and things like that, to where you work on percentages of the city and county. And the city would be responsible and answerable for the way they spend their percentage in the county they receive. That would make everything a lot simpler and a lot less arguments or disagreements on the way.
All right. The next round of questions, and we begin by the rotational basis with...
Eugene.
With Eugene. First question goes to Eugene Doughton. So read it loud and clear so everybody in the audience can hear the question.
Why are bids not sent out on county equipment such as all road equipment?
Mr. Doughton?
It won't take me two minutes to answer that one because I, I don't know. There are policies when you go by on bidding for equipment, there, you know, I'm assuming that when you go by a policy on bidding anything that's somewhere, and I'd have to have a little refresher to say how much money, of course, or I don't know what the law could be changed as far as leased equipment. I don't know if that's visible. I do know that you want more good equipment than vice versa, whether it be the little bit or not. Probably in my preference, but you want somebody that backs you up for your purpose. But to answer that, to be real clear, I don't know until I'm exposed to those numbers yet.
Andy?
Repeat the question, Judy.
Why are bids not sent out on county equipment such as all road equipment?
We receive bids from more than one company, motor graders, et cetera. One thing that we have looked at is, as Eugene says, you want good equipment, not necessarily regardless of price, but it's just as important to have good service department, good warranty. Some companies can give you a cheap price on a machine, yet you'll be a hundred miles to two hundred miles away from their service department. And when your machine's down, you have your manpower standing around, nothing they can do. You have roads that need to be graded. You need to be back up and going as fast as possible. You can spend a lot, a lot more money sometimes downtime and parts not being available. You want to consider price at all times, but at the same time, you've got to, you've got to look at service and who can get you up and going and experience that you've had. We've had, county has had some different brand motor graders in the past. They've not had, at certain times before my time, my understanding is that they have not had some good results with the machinery. As a matter of fact, I bought one motor grader that was a different brand when Eugene was in office. And they, they went to one brand, calls it the service, and parts were available to get you up and going. Now, we have looked at the same company and some others pricing, but we're primarily concerned also with keeping the machinery going and keeping it busy.
Janelle? You'll be to read this again.
Based upon the local, state, federal regulations, all county equipment should receive bids. You know, it should be advertised in paper and then you should send, you know, request bids and you have to have at least three. And it will be a sealed bid that will be submitted to the county. And then once they've received the bids, then they will open them up and give you the warranty, the cost, and performance, you know, of equipment. But other than that, you know, that's the way it's properly structured.
Thank you. Right?
All right. The next round of questions is coming from Ring Walker.
And you go start with Andy Hatta.
And we begin this round with Andy Hatta.
Okay. All reports Bacon County EMS is doing well. Would you work to find a way to assume at least part of the firefighter's EMT salary and take it off the taxpayers' back?
Well, we have, we have actually, I've been in office three, three years and four months. As I spoke of earlier, and when I came on board, we had ambulances that were actually breaking down on the road more than one time. I think Mr. Dial over here was possibly on one when it broke down. That was scary to me, that it could be someone in my family. Regardless whose family it's in, that's something that the county needs to not be in that situation. We have purchased four new ambulances and outfitted them with heart monitors, all the equipment they need, and none of it's inexpensive. Heart monitors are about seventy thousand dollars. We have been able to purchase at times some refurbished, rebuilt, certified heart monitors, be able to get two for the price of one, to enable us to equip our people with the best equipment possible. And I'm very proud of what we have now. Three of those four ambulances in less than three years are completely paid off with no cost from the taxpayer as far as property taxes, not come out of the general fund. Our EMS has done a fantastic job at making, answering calls, making transfers, and the billing that they get from that, been able to sustain payments of these ambulances and to allow them to be paid off so fast. Now, if we can, our plan is to be able to pay those off, finish the last call, and then be able to utilize some of those funds towards our labor and towards, we can essentially towards firepower costs.
Janelle?
Would you like me to repeat it?
Please.
All reports Bacon County EMS is doing well. Would you find a way to work and have it assume a part of the firefighter's EMT salary and take it off the taxpayers' back?
Our firefighter, firefighter in the EMS department is doing well. The dollars are supposed to be a part of the firefighter, you know, and they are supporting it, you know, with working with, with Bradley Coker. He has done a wonderful job. He has brought in a lot of equipment that the county has not had, which we paid a hundred dollars for. All we had to do was go, you know, the traffic expense and then paying them when we get that. We had to keep that equipment in county and service for a year, you know, and then we're getting it through the forestry department. And I would like to commend Bradley Coker on the excellent job that he's done and the time and effort that he has put forth. And we have an extremely good fire department to be proud of. And our volunteer firemen, we have good volunteer firemen. The only thing we need, we need to equip our volunteer fire stations, you know, and we do get extra funds for that. We can have fundraisers, and I would be willing to help the fire, the volunteer firefighters with fundraising, raise the funds in order to equip the fire stations.
Eugene, I repeat, Bacon County EMS is doing well. Would you work to find a way to have it assume at least part of the firefighter's EMT salary and take it off the taxpayers' back?
I'm sorry, you know, we'll be open to that option. I'm not knowing the numbers that are there. I pick them in, keep them in all fire departments. What they've done in the past few years seems like it's working very well. We want to continue that as long as we're maintaining the main station. We want them to make sure that they've got what they need, because they go out every day to protect the local and state's waters and all the property. So, and I'm sure that, I would want to make sure that they have everything to submit before we dig into their funds to pay salaries. I'm certain that people are possibly going to be more able to make that happen, not be able to move.
Okay. Our next question is going to come from Juan McDaniel, and we begin with what's next.
Janelle.
We begin with Janelle on this round of questions.
The county has more road equipment and better equipment now than it has ever had, yet the roads are not in good shape. If elected, how do you intend to improve our roads and reduce costs?
Excuse me a minute, Jeff. Everybody, if you hear in the back, if you hear, all right.
We do have to be good with it. We have to, and we're the least person. The actual, the employees need to have training to operate this. That equipment can be used to provide the cross grave where water wheels run down. And also, we have several pipes out there that's not being cleaned out, which we have a, you know, we have a filter, we have a pipe machine that can go out and wash the pipes out, but that's not being done. I would make sure, and along with the commissioner, that the supervisor oversees his employees to ensure that our roads are maintained properly and, yeah, you know, we're taking our...
Do you need the question again?
The county has more road equipment and better...
Hold, hold, just a minute. Come on in, folks, now, see. All right, go ahead with your question.
The county has more road equipment and better equipment now than it has ever had, yet the roads are not in good shape. If elected, how do you intend to improve our roads and reduce costs?
Well, our roads could be in as good a shape as can be with good, but we do have good roads now across the country. Training is, we prefer to say, super, bad training classes, pieces that work on campus, little training, Bacon County boys will fear. Grading roads is a simple, easy thing to do. You've got to do a better job. I mean, and I would say that if I was current here, you have to do a better job. Roads are going to be arguing with, going to be dirt. It's going to be, it's going to be really dry. I would dream of, of using to bust the county up and to the ditch and set the road ready. Individuals have only certain roads, and that way you can check and see who is actually doing the job and who's not. But that'd be something the commission, the board of commissioners, that's what we divided the county up into. Or one guy grades only certain roads. He does both passes, he pulls the ditches, and that way you have a little bit more accountability when the road ready to operate. Whether or not they've got the equipment to do that by now or not, I don't know. But road rating is a challenge in anywhere you got dirt roads, and I couldn't sit here and say they're going to be great in the near future. The women work hard, firefighters work, we have to, but that's not my goal. My goal is to...
Mr. Hatta?
Thank you. As Eugene said, a dirt road is always going to be a dirt road, and it's always going to be a challenge by some other nature. You're fighting increased traffic now. When I was in high school, there were probably two cars, maybe three in each household. Now, there's about five. You used to crawl under a car and change the starter without having to jack it up, but now most of these cars are about that high off the ground. So there's that much of a run that a truck, a big truck or a school bus is made, that some of these cars come through with their, their dragging bottom. And we have issues like that, and we always will have. I know that we, as far as our roads, it may appear, and sometimes it's, it's the vehicles that people are driving now. It affects them worse because they're lower to the ground, but we have, our school system in the past year has, we've had less days, we had days that our school buses ran when the surrounding counties were shut down. So that tells me that the roads are not worse here than they are in other counties. Our buses have been able to run, like I said, when other schools closed. We did not want them to run if it was unsafe. It was a school's call, but they worked with us in looking at that. We have machines that was mentioned earlier for cleaning out pipes. I know that it was, I saw it being used last week along with the mini excavator to clean out. I saw a crew with a couple of prisoners along with them cleaning out pipes the entire week last week. One of the issues you have in grading roads is you can't grade every day. If you get a rain, depending on the type soil that's on that road and how much it's raining, you may not be able to grade. You may have to park for two days when you would love to be grading. So it puts you behind schedule, but I don't think our roads are in that amount of shape. We've replaced tremendous amount of pipes.
All right. Judy Carter will ask the next question, and that question begins with...
Mr. Dial.
Mr. Dial.
From our audience, why should the county pay a local CPA to do work? In other words, payroll, balancing checkbooks, et cetera, when that work should be done in the commissioner's office? This would save the county a lot of money per month, CPAs are more costly.
Again, having not been in office, that's a hypothetical for me because I don't know the cost of CPA charging or firm charging, I don't know what kind of business that, what they're talking about. It could be the worst deal, the mechanics got made, it could be the best deal. I have no clue. It's just one of those things, you've got to be in the office and know and look at what it sits on, you know, how much bill here to do, the taxes, yes. Make a decision for that, and I'm assuming that five or more members made that decision just to get, that's approved. I have no position until I get in.
Mr. Hatta?
I think a lot of times people don't realize how much the county has grown in our staff. We have around a hundred employees now. The city, if you do a comparison, I think maybe thirty-something, I'm not sure, full time employees. The commissioners have wanted continued financial statements every month of all our departments. We have numerous departments, we have numerous budgets for areas that, for instance, DFAX, we have a building that DFAX rents from us, and we, we have several, several small sections that have a budget that you need to be able to see how their budget is running. We receive that monthly before our meetings, and we look at that, see if anybody's going over budget, if it's just on a line item or if it's their entire budget. So it gives you a chance to get with the department heads and give them an option of changing from one line item to the other to keep the bottom line... and, and give them an option of changing from one line item to the other to keep the bottom line within what we have budgeted. Uh, every year, every price on anything that any of the purchases has gone up, goes up continually, it seems, we'll never get into it. But makes it harder every year, uh, to stay within budget when your revenue is limited. Uh, we have, we are now searching and have, have some options for alternative income for the county, because that would be a budgeting issue, rather than just property taxes.
Ms. Bernadette, do you want me to read this again? Why should the county pay a local CPA to do work, in other words, payroll, balancing checkbooks, et cetera, when that work should be done in the commissioner's office? This would save the county money per month, CPAs are costly.
I was deployed, uh, September two thousand twelve, and had, uh, the department, and here's my last, uh, first part. She was actually doing the payroll, payable, and checks, and, uh, she was retail, I mean, she was taking care of all of that, you know, for things within the house. And then all the second years, now, merely with those details, and, uh, you know, securing the van, and cutting out the, uh, you know, field, just like, once you cut them out, they're replaced. Uh, it was planned through, all the work was being done, and lots of times, it worked out in the works, I do not know. Because, I mean, work can be done in the office, and it does not have to be done.
Alright, okay, next round of questions. Uh, from Ray Walker, and the first question will go to-
Mr. Hutte.
Mr. Hutte, what would you do to reduce staff in the county? And would you practice on required county patrols by the department?
I'm sorry to, to reduce the time.
Would you require county patrols by, by the sheriff's department or whoever that was to be?
Well, actually, the sheriff's department, sheriff's department, and he sets the schedule for his personnel. Uh, we would naturally want to encourage you to do as much controlling as we do.
Excuse me, that, that was the wrong file.
Just a moment, just a moment. I apologize for that question.
Go ahead.
Let's start over. What a good answer for that. You got a good answer, you did well. Okay, we're going to run you for chair. Alright, Ray, free, ask the correct question, and he goes to Mr. Hutte.
Our county government has grown disproportionately to the county's population, and the tax burden on property owners has become too much to pay. What would you do to reduce the tax burden?
As I said earlier, one of the things that, that we discussed with the, uh, I'm not sure, was that we were trying, we were going to try to serve alternative sources of income and revenue in the county. Most counties, well, all counties, are limited as to where your money comes from and where you can, can get the funds to cover your operations. Everybody normally, typically, for years, saying every commissioner has paid this, he's cut taxes. I have got the office of the day, busting about his taxes, I was preaching to the choir, mine coming up too. Uh, but before he left, he was, he was, it was imperative for him to be to cut corners, cut out some things. And before he walked out of the office, he turned around and said, oh, yeah, we need two large pipes just below my house on the road. And, you know, he was talking about two thousand dollars worth of pipes and, and work. And I said, and we're supposed to cut taxes and yet do that for you? How do you, how, tell me how to do that? Started three, and he said, that's fine, you're not making. But, uh, we have, uh, uh, the equipment that we purchased through the forest, uh, is, first of all, uh, tankers, things like that, don't include our ISO rating, which will help all of the taxpayers and property owners who pay an insurance, uh, that are within the radius of the fire department, uh, by having volume of water, that large volume of water, and other tankers that can respond. We have three tankers now, we have spread out in our volunteer stations, four actually. And, uh, that will, that will decrease the amount of their, uh, insurance on their home. And also, we are, we are looking at bringing in some funds on, uh, on these deployments, to be deployed to disaster, which we realize we'll be able to, in short periods of time, like a three-week period, we'll be able to bring in as much as a quarter of a million, half a million dollars, down every week.
Would you let me repeat the question? Okay, our county government has grown disproportionately to the county's population, and the tax burden on property owners has become too much to pay. What would you do to reduce the tax burden?
Uh, at this time, I do not see any way to possible reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers. We can't control the spending and eliminate waste, and, uh, taxes are not even a problem. You know, like I said, I, the other way can come down, the home insurance, whatever. But in council, if, if every county, if we take the taxes gradually as the past did, like I said, then we would not have such a, you know, on the taxpayer, you know, to pass up, you know, in a way that the government has. But right now, I mean, I feel like, you know, these, you know, tankers, that, um, we need to be, um, ready to come in, and, um, we can, both, um, have to allow the bank, the agents, work, and, um, the county, by, um, long way, on the bedroom, the section, um, go out and argue, to me, you know, have, so therefore, as one way, um, controlling, I'm going to say so, for some companies.
Eugene, would you let me repeat again? Our county government has grown disproportionately to the county's population, and the tax burden on property owners has, has become too much to pay. What would you do to reduce the tax burden?
Well, I, I, uh, probably said my own opinion, and I still stand on that position. Uh, we, we as a community, we think we're organized, and other communities, in South Florida, across the state, basically, and, 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 first the government, first place of, uh, create the whole fair system, yeah. Reduce our taxes, not every, that, public, that, that has a significant impact. That's what I, I personally like to, to eliminate, uh, property taxes. That'd be a very difficult thing to do, especially, uh, say, to look at, all the, uh, officials, my best, the governor, really find means to, to reduce property taxes throughout the time. Now, I, I admire, um, the, I don't know, what they're doing, and, and, I asked somebody, and I was starting to purchase better rule trucks, bigger rule trucks, that kind of last block, uh, last, one of them, yeah. I was in office, yeah, to do, purchasing, this fire truck, it's headed in that direction, and these papers were going to add to that building, to, 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 yeah. But, uh, I know it would be to work from every, every avenue possible, turn every stone, every crack, floor, and, and, certainly not over ten, certainly save the device. That's what the vast, it will be the, of having to say that whole, of them, me, and, and, and.
Alright, where are we here? And next, uh, round of questions comes from Wanda McDaniel, and you begin with which candidate?
No.
Janelle gets the first question.
This is a little bit late for you. What are your plans to remove the dilapidated grass old dean building, which is unattractive for industries looking for communities to locate and bring better jobs, or bring jobs to our communities?
The last thing, and, um, as a community, I mean, what I'd say, uh, the real thing, and actually, was, um, thank God for the government, and, um, so that to, and, and, um, which is a second, yeah, and, which, that, which, that, I'm in that law, that's my house, that, that, so there's forty five, um, that, that, uh, 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 I was working, see, in my, in my, in my, and, uh, this, that building, five buildings, that, um, the, um, quarter, uh, uh, uh.
Repeat the question, please.
What are your plans to remove-
Make sure, make sure they're all in use.
What are your plans to remove the dilapidated grass old dean building, which is unattractive for industries looking for communities to locate and bring jobs to our communities?
The rest of the building was, uh, friends, they did do, I was helping part of it, and I personally didn't, really, I don't know, because it's, she had, uh, uh, my, first step, on page one or two, would be, um, let them know, and see if we could, uh, we could, uh, 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 um, fix the call, we, the, the, post fact site, create some, uh, bad, uh, fact site, so the individuals, have not lived, uh, uh, uh,